Good evening and welcome to the February 1st, 2016 Meeting of the Town Scarborough Planning Board. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Karen, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Saunders, Mr. Bealy.
Here.
Ms. Ogless.
Here.
Mr. Fellows.
Here.
Mr. Mazur.
Here.
Mr. McGee.
Here.
Mr. Wood.
Here.
Thank you. I just want to note that while Ms. Saunders is not here, she did provide emailed comments, which have been provided to all board members as well as the applicants. The next item on the agenda is approval of minutes from the January 11th, 2016 Meeting.
If you make a motion for approval, Mr. Chair.
Second. There's a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
I think I have to abstain because I wasn't here for the whole meeting.
Okay. Ms. Saunders did have had one very minor comment, which will be incorporated. Item number four is election of Planning Board Officers.
Do you want to make a motion?
Staff sent an email around and welcome a motion.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chair, that we elect the following individuals for the 2016 Officers for the Planning Board. Corey Fellows as Chairman, John Mazur as Vice Chairman, and Roger Bealy as Secretary.
Second.
Surprise, Roger.
As an alternate?
As a second motion, is there any discussion?
Roger has an alternate? I'm not sure if he's...
Eligible for Secretary?
Eligible.
That is a great point.
I'll protest that.
I can't...
Okay, I'll amend my motion that we elect Corey Fellows as Chairman, John Mazur as Vice Chairman.
Ron.
I'm sorry, what did I say?
Ron.
John Mazur. Ron Mazur, I'm sorry. And then we can talk about Secretary, I guess, later.
I can take a look at the Board requirements for that, but is the Board still inclined to wait on that?
So the motion, well, do we have a second for that motion now?
I think you did.
I'll second it. Alright. So we have a seconded motion that covers just the Chair and the Vice Chair, with the understanding that Secretary would be for further discussion.
I might, you know, if the individual here that's a voting member that would like to be Secretary.
May I ask a clarification through the Chair?
Yes.
What does the Secretary do? I think that this may be the time to ask the question. Okay, since we're now discussing it, which we've never done before, I think we should discuss it. Go ahead and have our elections for the two members that we really need to have officially elected, and then really find out why we have to do this and what it means, because...
Ironically, the only thing I can think of that the Secretary has done in the past is to prepare a slate for this...
That is jokes.
For this election.
I could do that.
However, the person who previously held that post left the Board in December, so we have that void.
Susan, you don't have any interest in this role, do you?
I don't think so.
She nodded her head yes.
We're not asking you.
If you ask questions, you end up having to...
No, no, no. I'm just suggesting that it be...
I don't care. I don't want to tell me myself.
I nominate Mike Wood to be Secretary.
I'll take him.
Is there any discussion? Any further discussion?
So the motion as amended is?
The motion as amended is Corey Fellows as Chair, Ron Mazur as Vice Chair, and Mike Wood as Secretary. Any further discussion?
Now I get your name, Ron, Secretary.
It is important for the Secretary to get the names right. All in favor? So unanimous. Thank you. Forward to serving. Item number five. Chulug LLC, Bulos Management requests sketch plan review for 205 South Borough Drive, Lot 200, condo unit number three, assessor's map R37, Lot 48E. Jay?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let's see, this parcel is in the B2 District, which will ultimately, the proposal will require approval through our Site Plan Review Ordinance and the town's design standards. Just by way of background, parcel was first created in the 1980s as part of the South Borough Office Business Park, and it was further developed in 2006 with the Homewood Suites and 2008 with the Sebago Brewing. And this development is the third phase of this parcel to be developed. The site is what's known as a unified development in our ordinances, which essentially means that you can have multiple buildings on one lot. However, the lot, the parts of that development are to be sort of looked at as a whole. So while there may be separate tenants, the parcel itself is really what's sort of under review as part of this application. But certainly the details will, are around the merits of the proposal before you. To that end, probably the most significant issue that staff identified in our comments has to do with the proposed access to Payne Road. This is an issue that the Board had previously looked at under prior applications. The access to the site is currently at the intersection with South Borough Drive and Payne Road, which has a stoplight. And so this is one of the provisions in the ordinance calls for limiting curb cuts, and if there are to be multiple curb cuts, the applicant is, needs to demonstrate that it actually has an overall benefit on the corridor. So that'll be something that moving forward, the applicant will need to work through with their traffic engineer in any formal application they put together. Other issues of consideration have to do with parking on site. Some Board members have been on for a while, may recall. When the Sebago Brewing Company went in, they had a bunch of overflow parking, and there's been some established agreements, parking arrangements, and that will be need to be, need to be considered through the review as well. And then the final main element staff just want to identify is that this parcel is in the Red Brook Watershed. This is one of the town's two urban impaired streams, and certainly something we'll look for some sensitivity around through the design process. With that, I turn, oh, just mentioned that, again, this is that sketch plan. So this is really an informal discussion, an opportunity for the applicant and Board to sort of talk about the merits and identify issues before they put together their formal application moving forward. So with that, I turn back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Jay. Before we move on with this one, just one quick housekeeping note that I meant to make previously. Item number seven, Sixth Washington Avenue, has been tabled at the request of the applicant. So with that, we will welcome the current applicant.
That one should be on. Okay. My computer knows it's Monday. Thank you, Mr. Fellows, and thank you, Jay, for summarizing my presentation. I'm Kristy Holmes with Gorel Palmer. With me tonight is Paul Urinick with the Bulos Company and Randy Dunton of Gorel Palmer. We're pleased to have the opportunity to meet with you all tonight to go over this sketch plan application, and we appreciate the assistance from staff that we've received on a couple meetings prior to tonight. As Jay mentioned, our site is located in the South Borough Business Park. And the Homewood Suites, right here, was approved in 2006, and the Sebago Brewing Company in 2008. Here's our current unit number three, and it consists of about two acres. It's currently undeveloped. It's got a gravel parking lot. There's a lease agreement with Sebago for 50 parking spaces with them. And right now, the site, currently, the site's accessed here through the South Borough Drive, come all the way down here. In accordance with the design criteria, the building has been located as close to Payne Road as possible, with parking to the rear of the structure, curb cuts are minimized, interconnecting access is provided to Homewood Suites and Sebago Brewing, and pedestrian accommodations, if you can follow my little hand here, from Payne Road to the proposed building. So initial construction is proposed to be this building here. It's 6,600 square feet of retail with multiple tenants. The tenants have not been identified yet. And we've also reserved an 1,500 square foot area for a drive-through, and tenants for that have not been identified either. And there's a queue length for six vehicles, as required. I don't know if you can see it, but we did hatch the 50 spaces for Sebago Brewing. There are these spaces approximately right around here. So this area here is potential future construction of a 4,500 square foot retail building, and that's what these associated parking spaces would be for. This, as Jay mentioned, staff forwarded Ms. Saunders' stormwater comments to our office, and we will certainly look into them before the site plan application. A full stormwater report will be submitted, and we're looking at various treatment options. And we'll certainly meet with the town engineer and include inspection and maintenance report. As far as architecture goes, our client has not brought an architect on board yet, but the structure will complement the adjacent structures, the Sebago Brewing. It will most likely have a, two kind of front façades, one facing Payne Road and then one facing the back, the parking lot. It will incorporate elements such as fake windows and doors, awnings, and vertical and horizontal relief as required in the Commercial District manual. There was a comment from staff about the dumpster being quite a ways away. And we'll, we put it back there to reduce the visual impact, but we'll certainly look at alternate options that are closer to the building. And as part of the sketch plan requirements, it's required for a conceptual landscaping plan. So this is what we submitted. I think we'll work towards adding more green space, because I don't think that's enough right now. But, let's see. Town staff did facilitate a discussion with Lazy Boy Furniture. They're, this abutting parcel right here, about a possible shared access, but to date, they have declined to participate. So we have proposed a right-in and right-out curb cut here, and my colleague Randy Dunton will now speak a little bit about that.
Good evening. Excuse me, getting over cold. Mr. Chair, members of the Board, members of the staff. As Kristy described, the site will include, or is currently proposed, with a 6,610 square foot retail facility and a 1,500 square foot restaurant. This project did receive, or did get, a traffic movement permit back in 2008. The only portion of that permit that has not been constructed was an 11,250 square foot restaurant. So this would kind of replace that previously approved restaurant area, if you will. We have received the staff comments. We have received Mr. Bray's comments. We are aware that the right-in, right-out is a topic of discussion. We will have to, this project will require, at the very least, a modification to the existing traffic movement permit, quite possibly a new complete traffic movement permit, depending on how much it generates. So the purpose of tonight is to listen to you and hear what you have to say, see what your concerns are, take that in combination with Mr. Bray's comments, as well as staff comments, and DOT's comments. Take them all together in whole and try to come up with a plan that addresses those concerns and comments, or at least identifies what our alternatives are. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. Be more than happy to answer any questions, or Kristy can answer questions as well.
Thank you. So is that, that's your...
That's, yeah, we want to, we're here more to listen to you.
Sure, sure. It is sketch plan, as you noted, and Jay noted, this is sort of the first more kind of informal step, and there's going to be a lot of additional information and data for all of us to look at and review and...
Absolutely. A full, a full traffic impact study will be submitted, absolutely.
Great. So with that, we'll turn to Board discussion. Would you like to start off, Ron?
Yeah, I'll start, and let's start with the obvious, and that's the traffic. But before you even get to turning in and out of Payne Road, how do you propose, if you have a restaurant attached to the retail building, the flow of traffic, as you said you wanted a drive-through too? What would be the traffic flow? How would it work?
Depending on which way, depending on which way they came in, they would either, if they came in from this direction and they wanted to, say, go through the drive-through, they would turn the corner and come in this way. If they took a right in, they would come around and come up into the drive-through that way.
And how would they exit?
They could either exit, if they wanted to go right, they could exit out this direction here. Or if they wanted to, say, take a left, they would come out and go this way, up to South Borough and out through the signalized intersection.
Where would be the entrance to the retail aspect of things?
The entrance to the retail, right now, again, this is conceptual only, the entrance to the retail is right here, and the entrance to the restaurant is right here.
Okay, so facing Payne Road would almost be like the backside of the building?
No, it would be, it would look like, it would physically be the backside of the building, but it would be, we anticipate addressed to accommodate whatever your concerns are or your needs are, and look more like, it would look nice. It wouldn't look like the back of a building.
Okay.
Absolutely. If I could, Paul Urinick would like to just address the architecture for a second.
Yeah, you have to go up to the...
Come on up to the podium and introduce yourself. Thank you.
Paul Urinick, CBRE, The Bulos Company. Yeah, that's one of the challenges that we had when we were looking at citing this building is getting the building, you know, as close to Payne Road as possible, as your folks like to have them. But then that also, you know, you have to put all the parking then in the back if you have the building up towards the front. So the natural path for people to walk, of course, is the entrance to the building. Of course, the natural path would be on, let's call it, the rear side. But what the architectural objective would be, would be to make the Payne roadside of that building actually look like the front of the building through use of glass and storefront and, you know, whatever. So it's certainly not meant to look like, we don't want it to look like the back of a building. If anything, we'll make the Payne roadside of the building probably even a little more attractive than the parking lot side of the building.
Thank you.
Well, let's talk about in and out of Payne Road. I mean, I'm down in that area quite a bit, as I'm sure other members of the Board are. And as it is now, it's very confusing, because the right to go into South Borough, a lot of people taking that right, because they're thinking of going onto 295, and it's very close now. In my opinion, to have another entrance and exit in that particular spot, I have a lot of reservations. Okay, and I'm usually the most liberal of the Board members, so if I have reservations about that, I'm sure, and I know there is concern by, by some of the peer members of staff too. That one is a difficult one for me. To have another entrance and exit. It's confusing as far, as far as where Sebago is and, and the hotel. Not so much for the hotel, because that's in the back. But going in there and getting into Sebago and then having another structure, I just can't put my arms around it right now. Not to say I'm totally negative, I just can't put my arms around it. And in conjunction with that, as staff pointed out, making sure that all of the parking space requirements for the hotel and Sebago and any new entities would meet the ordinances of the town is another issue. It may sound insignificant, but in the big picture, it is not insignificant. And I heard what you say, that the next-door neighbor, and that doesn't surprise me at all, is reluctant to come to some sort of mutual agreement of using that area. And I understand that's an obstacle for you, unfortunately, because I think that would have been, at least mitigate a lot of the situations that I'm talking about. To me, that's, you know, without seeing the architecture and everything else, which I'll leave, and landscaping, and also, I would stress with all of this, let's assume for a moment that we go ahead, pedestrian movement is going to be very important in all of this. Safety of pedestrian movements in and, between the various structures and entities that are in that space right now. So that would have to be worked out, you know, to everybody's satisfaction also. And I think I've said enough for the moment, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Ron. Nick?
Thank you. Yeah, I'm going to echo a little bit of what Ron had said here. My major concerns with what I'm looking at is definitely the curb cuts. That is an extremely busy area. I have a question, goes back to something Libby had said earlier, which was, it's as close as possible to the Payne Road as we can get it. And I wanted to clarify, is that because of the entranceway and the spacing you need because of the roads? Or is it because of geographical features? My point being, if those curb cuts went away, can the building move in the other direction closer to Payne Road? And I, I'm going to kind of help you understand where I'm going with this. Is the 50 parking lots, you know, the parking spaces for Sebago, there's a count here of 97 spaces. That 97 spaces includes the 50 that you're giving to Sebago to begin with. Is that correct?
Yes.
So you're proposing 47 new parking spaces for potentially two brand-new retail locations and a restaurant, and that concerns me. So my point being is, if, if things shifted, can you get more parking because of it with losing curb cuts? Not that I want to design this plan for you, but those are items that I think you really need to pay attention to, because I know that Sebago overflow lot is used. And I think you have to expect that those 50 spaces that are designated for Sebago currently would be utilized a lot of the time. And I have the concern that you're going to be adding in potentially three new retail spaces, if not more, considering the other one probably could be subdivided a little, whether or not you'll have adequate parking for the, for the new businesses. So that'd be, that'd be one area I'd like you to keep an eye on and think about as you go forward. Also, in your current plan, did you have any plans for like loading docks? Or how does a tractor-trailer get in there? And, I mean, if you have a retail space, I imagine there's, there's goods to be shipped in, and I don't really see how that would work on this current design. So, just thinking of the business aspect of that. I think that's, that's the high points for me. I mean, I'm glad to see that, you know, we're putting things in there. But those are, those are my major, major concerns with the current design.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nick. Mike?
Well, thanks. I'm not, I'm not convinced that the curb cut and payment would such a, such a bad thing. One effect of having curb cuts will kind of calm the traffic down, so to speak. But as you enter this area, this proposed area, is it divided, is Payne Road divided right there from traffic that's moving, I don't know what's north and south, but let's say south is this direction? Can they make a left turn in, if they wish?
Yes.
They can? That would be, I think that would be my concern, having the curb cut there, because I don't think a left turn in would be, would be beneficial in that area. But I'm not convinced a right turn in or a right turn out is such a bad thing. The queuing, I'm wondering if you can design that. So I'm concerned as to how folks would exit the property. If they came in from Payne Road and made a right turn and went around, if they queue, it's easy to get out. But if they visit the retail, I think most folks would want to get out again through Payne Road. And my thinking is you haven't designed this to allow folks to travel back, back through the property and exit out of Payne Road if they're not queuing. Is that correct?
No, that's, that's actually, this area here is not striped, but it's two lanes. It's both directions.
It is two lanes, okay.
Yes, yep.
Because I think the vast majority of folks would elect to do that.
Yep. If they were going to take a right out on the pain, they would go out that way. If they were going to take a left, they would go out through the signalized intersection.
Correct, yes. And you'll have to have signage that will help direct folks that way. Well, before you, before you said that might be two-way, and I believe you certainly, but I'm wondering if it can be designed where there's also an opportunity. I've seen queuing lanes where they're wide enough where folks can travel... they're wide enough where folks can travel just the outside of the queued lane and utilize that way to exit also. I don't know if that might benefit this plan at all.
Okay.
We've had issues with inordinate numbers of cars queuing at these kinds of establishments, drive-through type establishments, and it's impacted, like, Route 1 traffic. I'd hate to think that the queuing would be such that it would impact folks coming in and out of that property also, so.
Right, but the way this site plan is laid out currently, that won't be an issue, because there's no restriction to them coming in. So if there were queuing onsite, it's not going to impact any roadway traffic, if you will.
Right, right. It'll only impact, if it impacts anything, it'll impact the internal movements.
Right, correct.
My colleague mentioned pedestrian accommodations. I think this begs for opportunities to direct pedestrians from the hotel to visit the establishment on foot. I see you've had, you have striped areas and sidewalk, but it seems like it would benefit if you did that also from the hotel area. And the parking for the retail, it appears that the drive-through is not going to really accommodate a sit-down scenario, but so the retail area, you really just have those two areas of parking right in front of the future build-out?
Mm-hmm. Right, there's additional parking all around the future build-out. There's parking here and parking here as well.
And that would be utilized if that should be built out later on?
Correct.
Everything in gray is not built, correct, as far as the pavement?
Everything in gray is proposed pavement, yes.
So currently, you have a lease agreement with Sebago Brewing that allows them to use spaces that approximate what's depicted here? Because it's not built out, right?
Correct.
Do they utilize that now?
Yes.
Do they park on, like, a gravel?
Yeah.
They do?
Yep.
And based on real-life experience, do you see that, outside of the 50 that you've agreed to or you have a lease with, do you see that that would accommodate the real-life experience?
Yeah, we would expect it to, yes.
I'm just wondering, like, you know, what, like, I know when I visit Sebago, you know, I'm usually not parking down there, but it does seem pretty crowded, so I was just wondering if down in that area, if they're actually utilizing more space than what that illustrates.
Right. The benefit of having a mixed-use development such as this provides for off-peak or shared parking. For instance, Sebago Brewing is probably not going to peak at the same time that the retail facility is going to peak. So their parking demands are not going to occur at the same time. And especially if the 1,500-square-foot restaurant were oriented towards the morning, you know, that's definitely not going to occur at the same time that the other uses are going to occur. So that's the benefit of having a mixed-use type development such as this, is your parking demands are, as well as your traffic volumes, are not going to occur at the same time.
What about site distances? Have you looked at that as far as, I mean, is that vegetation reflected about the current-
Site distance would have to meet criteria, yes.
Right. Does that illustrate the current conditions, this picture right here, the tree cover and all that?
There's a tree that's kind of greened out, if you will, over in this area here. So that would have to be, you know, cleared so that appropriate site distances could be achieved and maintained.
So I'm not, just to summarize, I'm not convinced that the curb cut on Payne Road is a bad thing, per se, but except for the fact that I wouldn't want traffic to be invited to turn left into the facility from Payne Road, in my other comments. But I think that'd be it for now. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I have one further question. Right now, everybody's using the lights to go into Southborough.
Correct.
Why couldn't that be used for everybody? I mean, even future?
Yep, it's a good question, I'm glad you, may I answer?
Sure.
Okay. The thought process behind the right turn in and out is a couple reasons. The first is obvious, for a retail or a restaurant-type facility, such as what, you know, a coffee shop, it's difficult, it would be difficult to get to the site, or circuitous to come in through the signal and come back to the site. In doing that, they're also going through numerous other parking lots. And I've heard, you know, pedestrian safety, as it should, is a concern, and that would be our concern as well, is having these cars flow through the parking areas to get to their destination at the end. Fortunately, you know, there is an area for a right-in, right-out. We know that a left turn, left in or out, would be out of the question. The purpose of restricting it to a right-in, right-out is, again, the safest movements onto Payne Road would be a right-in and right-out. So it's to get vehicles to the site in a non-se circuitous way so that it would be less impactful to the other facilities, both pedestrians and vehicles that are getting, you know, pulling into a parking space or pulling out of a parking space. And to be honest, you know, a retail would shy away, most likely, from a facility that you have to go around, you know, around the U, if you will, to get to the facility. It's not going to draw as much as people that can just pull into the facility when they, you know, see the name or something like that. So that was the thought process behind the right-in, right-out. We know there are some concerns, we appreciate that, we respect that. We're definitely going to take that back and consider what our options are. But that was the thought process in terms of-
And I don't disagree with you, and I'm going to play devil's advocate with you. However, in all honesty, and I've said, I've drive down that area a lot, people coming in that direction are going 30, 40 miles an hour. I mean, they're not creeping along.
Sure.
And to have another in other than that light is the concern.
Yep.
I'm not saying it's the whole issue in a nutshell, but it is a major concern as to how that flow of traffic now takes place. And I think that's where, we read comments from the police department and so forth, and I think that's where their concern is, is that that traffic is flying, and if all of a sudden someone wants to go into, you know, that's all I'm saying.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not trying to monopolize, but I kind of want to chime in a little on the topic, which is, if that curb cut goes in, I think what's going to happen is you're going to see an underutilization of the traffic light you have up ahead. Basically, you are now going to redirect any traffic into the site, whether it be through the hotel or Sebago, that's going to come in to the first entrance they see, which is going to create a lot more traffic coming through your parking lots. So that would be my other major concern about this. And then, and I want to just also go back to one thing you said earlier, which was, your timing, your parking spaces based on the type of business, we as a planning board have to take that longer-term view. Your tenants will change, you know, it might be a coffee shop this year-
Absolutely.
-two years from now, it might not be. And I think we have to build out and expect that those parking spaces are adequate for any future site build-out. You can't put the horse back in the barn, so to speak. So.
Thanks, done.
Thank you.
Okay, Michael and I are going to take exact opposite views on this. I've been watching this since it was first developed, and it disappeared. Way to go. There it is, thank you. And knew that sooner or later we were going to come down to the nitty-gritty, which is that the only safe way to access this is through the Southborough Drive. I understand exactly why you want that turn off Payne Road, it makes perfect sense. All the reasons you've explained for needing it for your business makes perfect sense. However, the question of whether anything retail belongs down there or not is a very good question, I think. I think you need to look at it from the standpoint of, do you really want to have people coming through the parking lot? Either coming in or going out? Is that something that's going to get people to come? Cues, I mean, they're dangerous, cues are dangerous. And you've got so many things going on in this particular development, all told. Just trying to make pedestrians safe without bringing in anything that is going to be retail or especially restaurant is going to be a challenge. But my big thing is access off Payne Road. I have seen one other place in Scarborough, an attempt to put in one of these would have been worse than this choice. Unfortunately, it did not go in. And there's traffic and pedestrians, there's traffic and pedestrians, there's traffic and pedestrians. And that's a very bad place to have it accessed. And our fire department agrees, our police department agrees. And I think you're going to have to get, really show us some hardship before you're going to get me to agree, anyway, to coming in off Payne Road. It was that way when it was designed, it's been designed that way for a very long time. Someone else had tried to do that in the town, very clearly said, "We don't want to do it." I'm sorry that you can't come in through Lazy Boy, that would have saved a whole lot of trouble. But as far as I'm concerned, it's just not going to work as a drive-through restaurant because of the access off Payne Road. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nothing else, Susan?
Oh, I have lots, but most of it's been already taken up.
That side took up most of the time, right?
No, not mine.
Roger?
Okay, thanks. Just a clarification, when you were speaking about the first plan that was approved-
Yes.
If I recall, there were some, those are going to be restaurants, those two locations, the one you're proposing now in the future one?
Yes.
Right. In the original approval, was there a curb cut? Or was everything internal, all the traffic internal?
I do not believe there was a curb cut.
Okay. I, your problem is Payne Road, because even Lazy Boy, trying to get, going out of Lazy Boy to head south, sometimes during the day, it's almost impossible across Payne Road.
Yeah.
And also, on the other side of the street around, the pet store is, and I think most internal traffic heads out going by Michael's, towards Michael's, just to be able to go out by the lights to get across.
Right.
It's so busy. Now, the ironic thing is, I've been going by using that street quite a bit recently, and in the morning, you know, if you were going to have, like, a donut shop or something there, I could almost see where that would work, because there's a lot of traffic heading north on Payne Road.
Right.
Not so much going south on Payne Road.
Right.
But in the evening, it's just the reverse, and you're going to run into a lot of trouble with people. Here's another thing, when I was there this morning, I was stopped at the lights right by the Goodwill.
Mm-hmm.
And you, it's hard to see the Sebago sign and everything from there. I was in the regular travel lane, and if you were heading south, I could see you're going to easily miss where the Sebago sign is until you're almost on it.
Right.
Then that means you've got to cut into the left lane, then you've got to cut across. And I could see people eventually going down to, "Oh, there's another opening there," and make the illegal left-hand turn. So I think it's really, it really is a problem, you know. And the only other thing I would mention is, on the internal parking area, I've been to Sebago Brewing quite often as well, and that could be a little confusing to people if they're not familiar with the whole area. You know, just-
In what way?
Well, just, if you're not, if you're not, well, first of all, when you're coming off of 295, it's right there, you know, the left-turn lane is almost after you go over the bridge, the left-turn lane is right there. It could be kind of confusing, you know. So I don't know whether internal signage or better lighting or anything like that would help, but I think it's going to come down to all rearranging the internal traffic pattern that's going to make it work for you. I mean, I hope you can make it work, but I think Payne Road's a real challenge.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Roger. Our board seems to have a lot of firsthand experience with this brew pub. I guess that'll come in handy in a couple of agenda items when we have our next brew pub on the agenda. There've been a lot of good comments by my fellow board members, and I won't repeat all of them. I will say that I sort of come down on the side of being very skeptical about the second curb cut. And it gets important to keep in mind that, as I think staff noted, that the way the ordinance is written, the burden is really on the applicant to demonstrate, not just that it would be convenient or preferred, and maybe preferred in the short term for sort of marketability purposes, but that the curb cut, the second curb cut, we need to actually improve the situation in terms of traffic flow and safety. And as Ms. Ogles pointed out, this is sort of the existing condition, in my mind, anyway, that's a pretty, a pretty high burden for the applicant to be able to meet. So I look forward to seeing the traffic impact study and the next iteration of your plan, and sort of see what you come back with in terms of support for that, or maybe another way of looking at it. There've been some good comments on internal circulation. Mr. McGee makes a good point about perhaps the unintended consequence of the second curb cut, in that it may actually create more through traffic through the parking lot to the hotel or the brew pub. So I certainly understand, and I think we all understand, the dilemmas that you face here with this site, at least insofar as there's a determination to have this type of tenant or mix of tenants. But we have to keep in mind that this is a previously approved plan, and we've got to look at this within the context of the ordinance. We haven't really talked about architecture, which is fine, it's sketch stage, but I will say, while I certainly appreciate the intent and the spirit behind this notion of not wanting to have something that looks like the back of the building face Payne Road, I think, based on past experience, this board, at least I, and I think a couple of others, would look very closely and critically at how you propose to do that. We've had a couple of examples of good intentions that didn't quite work out when they were actually implemented. And I think one thing I'd be wary of is anything that looks just too sort of blatantly false, that sort of looks like a Disney storefront, where you have just blatantly fake windows and things like that. So again, I think there are things that can be done to achieve that, that are maybe a little more nuanced and subtle. I certainly won't design it for you, but that's just sort of something I'll throw out there to the extent we get into architecture for next time. The question raised about parking and demand and capacity, and hopefully we'll see more on that. And the only other comment I'll make, it's a little bit more of a housekeeping comment, is that we will have the opportunity for public comment next time. This stage here, again, is more of a, you know, an initial conversation and just getting a feel for things. Next time, we'll presumably have a traffic impact study and some other things to respond to, and this board will be able to dig into it a little bit more, and we'll open it up for public comment as well. I know there may be some butters and others who might have some concerns as well. So is there anything else you need from us at this stage?
Mr. Chair, just-
Yeah.
Let me- Hold on, Ron, please.
No, thank you all very much. Believe me, we hear you loud and clear, and on the whole curb cut issue, so, we hear you. Mr. McGee, you had, I think, a couple of questions. One of them was, was there anything really preventing the building from being pushed more forward other than the curb cut? The answer is no. I think without that, we could move it forward more. Your other question had to do with, it seemed to you that the number of parking spaces there just didn't make sense when you counted all the uses. And I believe we went right by the ordinance, it was like four per thousand. But hey, if you, you know, I'm all about more parking spaces. Usually when I go to planning boards, they want less impervious, you know, especially when you're in the Red Book area and Long Creek and, you know, doing with that, but- But more parking, you know, if we could get five spaces per thousand, six spaces per thousand, wherever, you know, that's believed that that's more of a benefit to us. So if we can do it, we will. And we also, next time we come in, I'm thinking out loud here with really not having the benefit of speaking to the owner of the property, but we may come in again next time with another sketch plan before we take the next step. I had a good conversation with our neighbor and my friend, Arthur, next door, and maybe we can, you know, work something out with, you know, our neighbor on the other side and do something to benefit everybody. So we'll see.
I just wanted to say, it's not that we don't want anything to go in there.
No, no, I, believe me, I understand. I understand. No, I get it. I get it.
And the only thing I'll add on the parking is that, and this is just speaking for myself as one board member, but I personally wouldn't want you to come away feeling like we're inviting you to add a lot of extra parking just for the sake of adding parking. But I think what we want to see is, we just want to be comfortable that it's...
That there's enough.
That there's enough and that we understand kind of what the methodology is and how the math all works.
This is four per thousand, yeah.
And I think we generally do like to try to limit impervious surface within reason. So we just want to see a...
You know, typically, we shoot for five per thousand in retail. This is four per thousand, you know. We could get five per thousand, another, you know, I don't know, ten spaces or something, that'd be great. So, yeah, we'll say. We'll come back with another sketch plan before we take this one further. I think it makes sense. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Can I see that for a second? Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
On this memo, this town, the Scarborough memo, a couple of my colleagues referred to the concern that the public safety departments, and it says SEDCO, it also talks about the fire department, their concerns with the prior applicant's curb cut. But it's just a statement. In the future, I think it'd be beneficial, at least for me, to see what their concerns actually were. Instead of just a synopsis, if you know what I mean. I mean, I don't recall, I don't remember that discussion. If that took place back when this development was originally proposed in 06, '08, was that the intent of the comment?
Nope, it was during our interdepartment meeting, just the various departments go around and state their, again, it being sketch plan and not having a lot of information, they just sort of said, "Yeah, we see this right in, right out, and we have concerns that that kind of caused further problems."
Rightfully so. We all give a lot of credibility to these departments, and, you know, and I just would benefit if I had a little bit more substance to what it was that they were actually saying and why. Okay?
Okay.
That's all. Thank you.
Good comment. Thank you. Next item, On The Vine Marketplace requests amended site plan review for 591 U.S. Route 1, assessor's map, U-34, Lot 33. Jay?
Yep. Nick, Mr. Chair. As board members will probably have noticed and may recall, back in 2014, I believe it was, the applicants approached the town for modifications to Dunston Schoolhouse Restaurant to turn the restaurant, to repurpose the restaurant into a marketplace. At that time, there were a few site adjustments that the entity made, most notably the addition of about 750 square feet for cold storage area. That was administratively approved at the time. When the applicants were preparing for their, to open up and get their occupancy, when staff reviewed the plans, we noticed there were a few inconsistencies. And so as part of that process, as we typically do, we secured a performance guarantee to either correct those issues or have the applicants come before the board to discuss those in detail and let the board determine whether what has been done is satisfactory and meets the board's requirements. So with that, Mr. Chair, I turn it back to you.
Thank you, Jay. Is the applicant here? Come on up.
I'm Scott Edwards, one of the owners.
Abel Schultz.
Okay.
Also one of the owners.
All right. Do you have anything else you'd like to add to the synopsis that Jay gave us? We've all read your memo and just anything you'd like to add, or...
Not really. I try to keep it pretty simple. Kind of a simple guy, so that's what I did. We did go ahead on the HVAC units. We just, we went ahead and put the black insulated covering on it to try and hide the look of those things. We didn't want them in that building. There was a lot of things. When the plumbers, electricians, and the HVAC guys came in, you know, every single one of them said, "You need to tear this building down. Got to go." And we bought the building because we love the building, and we certainly weren't going to tear it down. But we were kind of forced into the position of putting that heating system in, that heating and air conditioning system in because the space is so large, and to get the appropriate amount of heat and air into there, we needed, we had to put them in there. Hood system, we thought we were okay based on what we did in another store in a completely different location. We thought we were going to be okay. Jim Butler kind of didn't even look at it. And it's probably because we didn't put it in there appropriately in the plans for the hood system and the exhaust. Came to find out later on, it had to go to the top of the building. So we did what he asked. We didn't want to do what he asked, but we did what he asked because it needed to be The gable thing, it, we needed an eight-foot space for our meat cooler. Prodigal cooler doesn't really matter much, but our meat cooler, when you've got large pieces of meat coming in, you've got to cut them down. You need that space. So we had to make it eight-four, which made the level rise a little bit. And then if you're going to put a gable up there, it would have looked, it would have looked terrible. So our builder said, you know, "Don't do that." And me, not having done, me and Scott, not having done this before, we didn't even think about it, you guys, and I'm sorry.
A lot of lack of experience going on.
Yeah. We didn't even think about it. "Yeah, go ahead, do it. Makes sense." Everything else is pretty self-explanatory.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Before we go to the board, we do have the opportunity for any public comment. Anyone just to come up and say anything? I don't see anyone, so Mike, do you have anything?
Yeah, I'm just trying to orientate myself. But on bullet point five, this document here?
Yeah.
Where it lines up the fence, I think you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, is that the back of the building?
It is.
Okay. And this here, bullet point two, the after, this is what exists now. And in the documentation, it talks about, what did you, just kind of minimize the impact of some of the piping?
Yes, well, we put in...
You can stay up there. Everyone can.
We put in, those cooling units, we put in, we actually found, they've only been out for less than a year. Most of the units are really big and ugly, and they have to be set three to five feet off the wall, three to five feet of air all the way around them. But those units only need to be six inches off the wall.
So they just hang on the wall like...
Exactly. And it's not a plowing issue either, or much less so.
That was my next question. Are these protected from the travelway? I mean, it just, from this photo, it appears that folks going this way or, I mean, they could be damaged. I mean...
They could. There's no parking right there. The fire department is at the very end of that building. Very end of that corner is where the, they hook in for the water line.
And this is an electrical?
That is. CMP had us put it there because they wanted it underground.
So has this been, has this been looked over through the chair? Jay, has this been looked over by code enforcement and...
Yes. So they do have a certificate of occupancy. So in terms of building permit, building safety and such, yes, they're...
Okay.
Yep.
I'm just kind of surprised that there wasn't a requirement maybe to put a couple of bollards there or something, just to keep, you know, an accident from occurring and impacting the electrical or more so the electrical everything. I would think that was, that's probably three-phase power right there?
Oh, yeah. That's true.
So my two cents is, I have no problem with what you've done, and I appreciate you coming back and illustrating everything for me. But, and I don't want to add to your cause, certainly. I enjoy you being here, I visit your store often. But I think for everyone's sake, I might suggest that consideration be made to somehow protect these units from vehicular traffic, whether it be, you know, what do they call them?
Bollards.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or the like.
Yeah.
But thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you.
Nick?
That's why I'm clear. I'm looking at your backstories here. These are the units that you said that they need adequate ventilation, and you really wouldn't, like, should put a fence around it?
I don't, I really don't want to. My HVAC guy said, "You really shouldn't." He doesn't know that much about them because they've only been out for less than a year. And they're supposed to be okay with that, but he doesn't recommend it. So I didn't want to do it. I will, you know, I'll do it. I'll put the same kind of fencing up that I proposed for the back, covering the dumpsters and all the mechanicals back there. We can do it.
I was just thinking, there's the style of fence that they're offset. So there's a board here on the side of the post, and then one on this side. And that should, I would believe, allow for enough air circulation as well as provide that visual deterrent that we're kind of talking about. Also, protect your expensive equipment. I'm not sure the town really cares that your coolers get clipped, but you might. So it could benefit everyone here, some form of protection and visually on top of it. I think something like that could work. That'd be my thought on the matter. Other than that, good luck.
Thanks, Nick. Ron?
Yeah, anything I want to add to my two colleagues is the dumpster location?
Yep.
Has that been worked out?
They are where they are right now. In terms of, do you mean like with Jim Butler?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm just going to echo what my two colleagues said a lot. I think something should happen also. And I understand the concern, and it's a brand-new type of equipment. But we need to look at the big picture, and that's what we're trying to do and pass on these. And I agree, something needs to be enclosed there.
You want it enclosed, is what you're saying?
Well, similar to what Nick said.
Some solution perhaps allows your circulation, but yet, you know, provides a little bit of that visual...
Yeah, we're not mechanical engineers, so I can't tell you what's going to work.
Right. They said, you know, if you're using a chain, what do you call it, chain-linked fence, you're good to go. Otherwise, the slatted ones, the ones with the slatted, you put the thing through, it's really all the same, it's going to restrict it. If you're going to do it, he said, if you're going to do it, put the fence up.
Okay. Whatever.
Okay. Mike, did you want to add or...
Well, I just want to, I think we're talking slightly different things. I'm talking about protecting the equipment. And my colleagues appear to be talking about not only protecting it, but also hiding it.
No, protecting it.
Oh, okay.
Protecting it.
Then I...
I think you accomplished both.
I misheard. You can accomplish both. But I'm not talking about hiding it. I'm talking about protecting it. Thank you. Susan?
I want it hidden. I'm the hide-it gal. I'm just suggesting that the suggestion that, I'll get it, Nick made, I hadn't thought of it, but where, instead of being like this, they're staggered so the wind, the breeze can blow through it. I mean, it's designed on purpose so that it doesn't block all the breezes. I'd like to suggest that you at least check it out. And I don't, I mean, my husband's an HVAC engineer. I understand about, you know, you don't cut off the circulation, you just don't do it. But if there's something that can be done that allows the circulation to occur, I'd like you to look into that at least.
Well, we have, and like I said, the HVAC guy said, according to what the standards of this new unit is, we can put the fencing up. He just, with all the units, he's not comfortable with it because he doesn't know enough about it. But according to the standards of this new HVAC unit, you can put the fencing up.
Okay. I'm not going to get caught up tonight on fencing. I'm just not. However, I would like to go on record as saying what you've done with this building is wonderful. I'm totally grateful that you're there. I come quite frequently. Everything about it is great. This part right here is enough to make the people who sold it to you cry, you know. But I think that at some point, if you could at least consider putting a fence up once you've had the unit long enough to know whether you're going to be endangering it or not, I don't know how we as a board have anything to say about that. But no, it's a concern. Okay? Other than that, I'm all set.
Thanks. Roger?
Thanks. I guess I would agree with Sue and Mike. I would leave it alone right now because you're trying to, you know, react to what your expert has told you you want to do. And this is the south side, which, from what I gather, there's no traffic around here anyways because your entrance is on the other side.
Correct.
So unlike when it was the restaurant, there was a circulation, but there isn't really right now. So this sounds to me like it was a case regarding all this where you had your contractors come in and do various things, but they never told you, "You've got to go let somebody know that we're doing these things."
Which is on us at the end of the day.
So I don't really have any problems with any of this stuff. It makes sense to me, and I understand the situation, so.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll echo the sentiment that what you've done is outstanding, and it's great to have you there, and appreciate you coming back. You know, you're not general contractors and you're not developers.
No.
And sometimes those processes can kind of get away from you a little bit. I do have a draft motion here for the amended approval. One of the conditions does get to this question of screening the chillers on that backside. Sort of leaves open the ability to coordinate with staff and sort of figure out, staff and others, and sort of figure out what's the best way to achieve it. So hopefully, you know, it's not, it's not something that's a, you know, a real owner of the mandate. And then I would agree with Mr. Wood that there's a separate question of protection and whether you might consider bollards there. But that's something I think that, again, is more your prerogative.
Yes, Roger? Just a comment on the, if we're talking about the screening primarily for aesthetic purposes, couldn't you just put in just something perpendicular to the building? Because we're talking about basically as it appears from Route 1. Because I don't think anybody cares what it looks like from the back, do they? In other words, not have something that completely...
Yeah, I guess I would file that under to be discussed and figured out. But that's a valid point. Okay? So with that, I'll put this motion out, and I'll certainly welcome any tweaks that folks might want to recommend. I move to approve the site plan amendment application of On The Vine Marketplace for the amendments as presented in the materials dated January 15, 2016, with the following conditions. Number one, the dumpster enclosure fencing at the rear of the building will need to meet the fire department's requirement for an EGRIS store and signage. Number two, the dumpster shall not be located within the 10 feet of the structure. And number three, screening shall be added to conceal the two refrigeration units on the southerly side of the building. Final details to be reviewed and approved by staff. That's the motion. We have a second? Any discussion?
I'd like to ask staff if staff's comfortable with that.
I think based on the direction of this discussion, I am. But again, I know there are board members who may differ with that.
I assume you're referring specifically to the question about coordinating with staff.
Yep.
Right? Yeah. I think this is... Okay. Mike?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not so convinced that screening needs to be, needs to be done here. Certainly, like, if I was to add a bullet three to this motion, I would be more intent on having it speak of protecting the units and in particular the phase...
Mike?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not so convinced that screening needs to be, needs to be done here. Certainly, like, if I was to add a bullet three to this motion, I would be more intent on having it speak of protecting the units and in particular the phase three power. And if that can be accomplished, as Nick had said a few moments ago, if that can be accomplished by both screening and protection, then fine, you know? But my interest is in the protection of those, of that infrastructure. Secondary is my interest in the screening. This speaks to like, this tells me the screening is the paramount concern. So those are my, my thoughts on it.
Okay.
I agree with you.
I think that's a-
It, it does make, imply something when we're both talking about protection more than anything else.
Yeah, I think that's a, it's a good revision.
So I don't know how to put that in an amendment.
Jay is giving it, giving it his best right now.
I could struggle for it.
Can I ask, those, those fans, are they intake or exhaust?
They're exhaust.
They're exhaust. Is there, I mean, is there a significant amount of blow coming from them? I mean, if you're walking by, you know?
We opened September 5th and, no.
No?
You know, I don't-
Your foot traffic, I imagine, I mean, there is an entrance there. I don't know if it's utilized.
Yes, we lock it.
So, no one's really wondering around back there?
You'd enter behind like a deli counter when I'm in there.
Okay. Kind of indifferent.
Okay. I think me and my nephew are the only ones that park on that side of the parking lot.
All right.
Visually, it does not bother me. I mean, that's a personal taste. I just don't know how that complies with what we're talking about here for starters.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, I think just for a point of reference, when staff flagged this as an issue, that's where the, the site plan ordinance and design standards sort of talk about shielding and screening these type of units. So that's where staff's comments were generated. So I do think at this point, I would look for direction from the board, because I think the third condition could read either, as it reads now, screening to be provided. And to me, the way I'm thinking of that is more in the line of the way Mr. McGee was speaking, maybe that offsetting fence or working, working with the applicants to come up with some type of reasonable screening. Then there seems to be another notion about eliminating the word screening and really talking about protective measures shall be added to, to protect or something to affect the units and the CMP. Or there's sort of a, maybe third, hybrid to those protective measures and screening. So again, I, I would look for board correction on this.
Well, the thing is, I would suspect code enforcement would have required them to protect the electrical, had it been an issue.
Right.
And, I mean, that, we, I don't think we should be making up standards for perfection.
We do, we do it all the time.
Well, we should be. I mean, that's what code enforcement's for. I mean, they write the code on what's, I mean, I mean, that's not, I understand what you're saying, that's a lot of voltage, but that's still, get out of anywhere.
I think it's a, I think it's a legitimate, I think it's a legitimate requirement of the board. And I, I think for me, I, I keep in mind sort of the context and the history here that we've gone from what was an administrative approval and because of the way that things actually came together, it's now back in front of us and that sort of opens some other things up. And I think we're, I think we're being pretty even-handed here and not really talking about imposing anything that's particularly onerous. So, I, and to Jay's comment, I, I personally, and I think at least one or two other board members, agree that screening is something that we do want to accomplish here. You know, this is at least to me, you know, this is a building that's, it's a great, it's great what you've done, but it, you know, it's a, it's very exposed, there's not a whole lot there right now. It's not like we're asking for a lot of landscaping or buffering or anything like that. And I think this is a, sort of a minimal measure to take to screen that equipment. So, I would propose that, an amended motion with number three to read, protective measures and screening shall be added to conceal the two, to protect and conceal the two refrigeration units on the southerly side of the building. Final details to be reviewed and approved by staff.
And, and the electrical?
Yeah.
Or just the refrigeration units?
Uh, good, no, that's a good point. To conceal the two, to conceal the refrigeration units-
And?
And electrical equipment on the southerly side of the building. So that's an amended motion.
Our second amendment.
That's seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? All right, thank you. And thank you again.
All right.
Buck? As noted before, item number seven was tabled. Item number eight, none such river brewing requests site plan review for 201 Gorham Road, assessors map R-55, lot 34. Jay?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let's see. This item was before the board back in December as a sketch plan. Subsequent to that sketch plan meeting, the applicant has been before staff as for a pre-application review. So the applicant had benefit of one round of staff comments prior to putting their formal application together for the board. At this time, as board members will know from staff's comments, there's still the need for the applicant to secure a Department of Transportation movement permit as well as a DEP wetland fill permit, I believe a tier-one permit, before the board will take final action. But the applicant, based on sketch plan comments, previously had made some adjustments to their plan, so it's their intent to come before the board tonight to talk about the changes in the site, to be sure the board is comfortable with those directions and see if there are any other issues to be addressed as they sort of work through these other state and permitting issues. To that end, you'll have received staff comments, planning staff comments, as well as comments from Woodruff and Kern on general engineering issues. You also received comments from Goral Palmer, who's acting as the town's peer review, traffic peer reviewer on this item. I will note that there is a scoping meeting scheduled with the DOT, which staff will be attending, as will Goral Palmer on the town's behalf. I think one other thing, just to note for the board and folks in general, that we are working to coordinate with DOT and the applicant to ensure that the overall Gorham Road project, where town's looking to, to improve Mr. Gorham Road, basically from Oak Hill up to Payne Road, are well-coordinated with this project. And that, those are ongoing discussions. With that, Mr. Chairman, I would-
Now, we get also from the conservation, did you mention him?
That's under different items.
Oh, is it? I thought that was-
Thanks, Jay, and I'll turn over the applicant.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Lee Allen with Northeast Civil Solutions, joined tonight by Chris Bakula, architect for the project from Custom Concepts. Also, Mike Schuler and Tim Boardman, the owners and developers of the restaurant. Want to take you quickly through the status of where we are. I think Jay mentioned some of this, but we have submitted our NERPA tier-one permit for wetland fill and have been told that we have approximately four to six weeks before the processing date is due. A lot of times they get that permit done ahead of that, but that's the schedule we're told at the moment. As Jay also mentioned, we have a DOT traffic movement permit. I believe we're scheduled for a meeting next, a week from this Wednesday. And following that meeting, we're going to follow up and have discussion about off-site road improvements, how we're going to actually construct them, what we need to construct and kind of work out the logistics, knowing that the Gorham Road phase improvements are coming. Some of the changes, this is our site, we're just south of the Eight Corners intersection with Spring Street and Muzzy Road. We're slightly over two-acre site and there's a stream that bisects our property and all our development is on the Gorham Road side of that. You may recall previously, our driveway was, was further to the south, down next to that residential house. There's a 25-foot buffer there. There's also a DOT drainage easement there. So we've shifted the driveway up closer to the building. We think that works much better from access getting in and out. It doesn't interfere with the buffer or the landscaping. If you recall, we also discussed the option of shrinking up the aisles to kind of compress the site so that we weren't pushed out into the wetland area. We did that and were able to pull that front edge of the parking back from the edge of Gorham Road or the right-of-way, 18 and a half feet, the requirement was we needed to make at least 15 feet, so we've succeeded in that. I think other than that, it's very similar. I know the, some of the big issues that were pointed out in the memo we wanted to go over, had to do with the number of seats that we're proposing in the restaurant and how they're going to be used and what the spaces in the restaurant were actually going to be used for. There's a kind of overhang porch balcony upper deck area. In the summer, we're certainly going to take advantage of using that for outdoor seating. In the winter, our plan is to move those outdoor seats indoors and make it kind of a little more crowded inside during the winter months, but not to exceed the number of seats. I, I think really it's the parking is going to drive how much, how many people can be in there, not necessarily the seats. So we don't see that as being a problem, but that's kind of the ideas behind how we're going to use the space inside the building. I think with that, I'm going to turn it to Chris. He's going to go over the architectural plan and be certainly happy to answer any questions afterward.
All right, I'll recap the layout, starting at the first floor. So, again, first floor entry with egress stairs to the balcony level, the porch level with bathrooms and generally the bar and seating area in the center. Double-height space which goes down to the basement to the brewery property, to the basement level will be the brewery, it's called Kitchen Boma in the back, which the roadside is on this side. And then, like we were saying, this is that porch area over the entry, front portion of the building with lounge and interior seating and the medley above it, open to the dining area below. And elevation from which, well, not too much change on any area, but we added the cupola on the roof that helps the overall volume scale of the building. And I think one of the big items we talked about was just developing the perspective to kind of show you how the roof will work with the volume of the building for the, kind of the big thing to show you, to develop the breathing area. Quickly, it's for right now, open plan for the brewery for that double-height space on this end, access to the backside, loading, and the kitchen area is going to open the area. Questions or comments?
Did you have anything else? No? Okay. Before we turn to board discussion, we do have the opportunity for a public comment on this. So if anyone would like to get up and say anything, just limit it to five minutes. Come on up and introduce yourself.
I-
Come on up, up to the podium, please. Thank you.
I submitted a letter this afternoon. Do you have copy of that?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so you are Shirley Curry?
I am Shirley Curry.
And your address?
91 Muzzy Road.
91 Muzzy Road. Thank you.
My property backs up to this piece of property.
Right? Yes.
Shall I just read what I wrote?
You can say whatever you want.
Okay.
Within reason.
I know.
Within reason. Within five minutes.
This is family hour.
All right.
Right.
I received a registered letter recently about the possibility of a brew pub, restaurant, and brewery on the Gorham Road fairly close to Eight Corners. Said property backs up to my property and I am very incensed that this type of establishment would be located here. The thought of a bar being next to my property is unthinkable and I could plan that, and I could plan some type of residential project in that area because my property is zone R2. This bar would be in a current residential area with four homes on one side, two homes on the other side, .2 miles from an active church, .4 miles from an elementary school. I just feel that this kind of establishment would not be a good use of this area. I would not like to see Eight Corners go in this direction. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Tayan Vu. I, I am living at the 205 Gorham Road, the, which is the adjacent property north of this property here. I'm here just to ask you during the review process that you would keep this in mind that currently there's an existing residential neighborhood. There are residential homes adjacent to this property, so I just, and that, I would ask you to have careful considerations on the level of outside noise, lighting, any order that may come out of the brewery, and buffering requirements. When I speak about buffering requirements, I would, I would like to ask you to kind of give a, kind of good consideration on the adequate buffering, like buffering amenities that would add immediate buffering, like some kind of fencing that would give immediate buffering so that I don't have to deal with what I have, you know, to see my next door, like cars and parking spaces. It's going to be a huge parking lot and, and because I'm, you know, I'm living in a residential home and this is certainly a business and it's going to definitely impact where I live. And on the second part of it is that I, I'm not sure if the new owner aware of that, but I would like to mention on the sewer line connection, because when I, I originally purchased my land of Mr. Joseph Naby, who is the former owner of this property, and at the time, there was no sewer outlet that I can connect to, to run it to my home. So I had to, and it was required by the town, the sanitary district, that I would have to connect to the public sewer line and because there's no outlet in front of property, so I had to go to use the closest outlet, which is right in front of the north corner of the property, just right where it's pointed now. And, and I, I got an easement from Mr. Naby just to run the sewer line to connect to that sewer outlet. So as I understand that, the, there's only one outlet per user, so I'm not sure how the new owner is going to address the sewer, sewer connection. So I would like to understand and aware of that. And lastly, I would, would want to mention again earlier that because this is a residential neighborhood and right now there's adjacent residential homes and definitely my home's going to be impacted. And since my home was built prior to, this area got rezoned to TVC3, so, and I would ask that the building setback to be 25-foot setback. Right now, from seeing at the, the plan, it is at, I believe, 15-foot setback. And I feel that it is, would be appropriate for the residential home, for the business to have a setback at 25-foot instead of 15. So, so that's, in closing, I just want to, you two, all board members, to have a careful considerations and, and hope that what, what your decision is would- considerations and, and hope that what, what your decision is would protect where my property is, and also protect my way of life that has been going on for the past fourteen years since I first moved and built my home there. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing none. Let's start on this side this time, Susan.
Sure. As I said during the last meeting we had, I have very conflicting emotions on this half of me is saying, wow, a beer brewery in Scarborough. Isn't this the coolest thing? We've been waiting a long time for this, and I don't want to do anything to discourage it. However, somebody in the group, I'm not sure which one of you, said that essentially parking is going to be driving the use of this restaurant. And I think that that's it in a nutshell. It's going to be hugely popular, and your parking is not going to, it's not going to handle it. So you're either going to be serving miserable food and miserable beer, and your parking's not going to be a problem, or you're going to serve great beer and great food, and you're going to have a huge parking problem. There's not, you know, I mean, by, by the paper, it's okay. But I can guarantee you, you're going to have a parking problem. And I would like to have something addressed as to what you're going to do when you've got a parking problem, because there's very, there can be no on-street parking, there's no overflow parking, you've got a river, an unnamed stream right behind you, and I am a water quality person, big time. So, you know, there's going to have to be all kinds of things done to protect that stream. There's not going to be an inch to give up for parking. I think it's the number one issue you've got.
I think, I can interrupt, I think we have a preliminary solution, something we've been talking about as an option. There's a church around the corner, and there's a potential to work out some sort of parking agreement where we do kind of valet parking and move the cars over there, have the employees park over there. We realize that that could be an issue, and we'd have to have an agreement.
Okay. That, that might work. But I have a real hard time sitting on the planning board, granting permission to build a restaurant, knowing that there's, now wait a minute, there's not going to be enough parking. And the solution is going to be to valet park at a local church. I'm sorry, but it's just, it just doesn't make any sense to me at all. And, and remember, it doesn't always have to be a beer brewery. You know, if you're really successful, you're going to want to go someplace else and big something, build something bigger in a place where you're going to have more parking. So I'm thinking long-term here, right? And I don't think this is adequate. I mean, you, you, the proof is in the pudding.
So that's our contingency plan, but right now, based on the square footage we have and the seats, we meet the letter of the law.
I know. That's what I'm saying, you do, but you're going to have a problem.
I hope we do.
Yeah, I know. I hope you don't have the one I'm anticipating you're going to have. The buffering is a very huge issue. Thank you for coming in and addressing us. It's a huge issue. I was part of the long-range planning committee that worked with the town on coming up with rezoning this land to begin with, and we, we knew that it was going to be an opportunity for, creating in a different kind of environment out there, but it's got to be done in a class way. So we're going to be looking very closely at what your buffering is going to be. I'm glad this is not where we're going to be giving you any kind of preliminary approval tonight, because I still want to see these kinds of, you know, the parking thing. And then, this is, I, I own this, okay? This is personal to me, because I don't want you to think I think you're a terrible architect, because I don't. But I have such a hard time looking at that, and really knowing what the relative proportion of that roof is. I can see the car, that helps. But if I'm, but, let somebody stand there and show me where is the residential house that's going to be abutting this? Where's it going to be abutting it? Which side?
Backside.
The backside? Okay.
Yeah, that's, I mean, there's, there's some people in there, but it's, yeah, it was, it was an attempt to treat them.
Why is it so tall? Just because it can be?
Uh, it's.
The roof, I mean.
It's, the, the proportions of the roof are what we started with, is a twelve, twelve pitch, and, and to kind of give the, the first story space, I don't know, sort of openness aside.
Is, as I say, I own it. It's my thing, I think, is out of character, I think, is out of proportion to what else is going on in the neighborhood. And I say that with a caveat, because I have a real hard time telling from these things. Some people, when they bring in, what am I trying to say, landscaping plans, will do it in such a way that you get a real good proportion, sense of proportions. If this is a real good sense of proportions, then it's not proportioned well for where it's going to be.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Those are my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Roger?
Thank you. Not to disagree with Sue, but I like the building. I like the way it looks. And I think, I, I'm also impressed that there's actually elm trees on this property. I thought there were no more elm trees anywhere, so that's good. But I do think, one other comment, too. As far as I'm concerned, if I was going to a restaurant, and there was no parking spot left, I would just go to another restaurant. I, I, you know, I mean, that's what I would do. So, if, if the parking meets what we require it to be, I don't think that's going to be an issue. I think people just, if they can't find a spot, they're just going to go someplace else. I think we do have to be very sensitive to the abutters, though. And for instance, I noticed on, on your plans, on where Mr., is it you? You have abrevities there, I'd say. And on the other, or the other side here, you have white pines. And to, to me, I, I, I think you should do as much as you can do to protect their, their privacy and everything. And I would think the white pines would be better than the abrevities, because they're going to grow. You know, I'm familiar with the white pines on Pudding Hill Road where, you know, where the recycling place is?
Yes.
You're familiar with those?
Yep.
And they really create a nice buffer. And, and they, and they grow tall and full and everything. So I would be very, I think you've got to be very sensitive to that. And on regarding Ms. Curry, that's all wooded and everything in the back there, right?
The tree line is right in here.
Yeah, that's, that's going to be all wooded and underbrush and everything else, right?
We're not going over there, we're not disturbing that.
Yeah. And the, and the only other comment I'd say is, this is a T V C zone, and there's going to be, that's, it's designed for mixed development. There could be some commercial development, there could be residential. I mean, that's the idea behind it. It's a more fashion-type neighborhood, where you could have a convenience store and things like that, so. I think that's what, you know, I don't know, I, I don't have any other comments, I guess, at this point.
Thanks, Roger. Roger, Ron?
Yep. I find it interesting that, that there's a deal that may be made with the church, so obviously the church is not opposed to the.
It's, it's, it hasn't been formalized, but it's, it's in the planning stages.
And I, I don't know if anybody on the board has been to Portland, but there's no parking in any of the restaurants in Portland, and a lot of them have valet parking, which I have utilized on numerous occasions. So if there's obvious valet, I think people who really want to go to the facility will take up the idea of valet parking. I don't have any problem with that whatsoever. Couple of things, though. One of the things that hits me, and I've, you've got to describe this, because I have a little familiarity with microbreweries, is that this is going to be a combination microbrewery and restaurant, right?
Correct.
Is five thousand square feet enough to satisfy all that?
Yeah, it's, it's actually floor, floor space, it's, it's broken up, so there's, give you the exact, it's forty-four hundred and sixty-four square feet of brewing space, which is basically the basement level and that, that level that extends open to the area above. And restaurant space is four thousand and eighty square feet of restaurant space.
So what'd you say the brewery was?
Four thousand four hundred and sixty-four.
Yeah, the, the footprint, which is essentially the brewery, is the forty-four hundred square feet brewery property, separate out. And then the restaurant, what, what did you have for the?
Four thousand and eighty.
So the total is eight thousand and something.
Right. We're talking footprint space, these are different, in actual usable, leasable square footage areas.
Okay, okay. All right, that makes me feel a little better than five thousand for just the whole, whole thing. And with that, as staff noted, that if they're going to use the outside port deck during the summer, then, then calculations for parking need to be in order. I don't know exactly what the numbers are, but.
So it's all based on seating? So it's a matter of whether you have indoor seating in the winter, or you take that seating and move it outdoor in, in the summer? It's still a hundred and forty-two seats, it's just where the seats are.
And the idea is, in the summertime, it's going to, everyone's going to want to sit on the porch, so that's where the seating will be maximized, and if not like that, will be added to the total.
Right.
Is that okay, Jay?
I think that's, the discussion the board needs to have. I know in the past, there's an example where the board has, has, has worked with the applicant and, and come to a careful understanding of what that would look like, and that's down at the Higgins Beach Inn, when they added their deck space, this is going back a number of years, but that was sort of the discussion around that, because they did have similar situation with limited parking. So, yeah, I think there's a couple of nuanced points that the zoning would permit if the board's comfortable. I think this is one. I think the other issue you've touched on is the square footage. Again, it's, it's really, the ordinance talks about limiting the square footage of a unit of occupancy, so essentially what the applicants are, and, and we have a definition of what a unit of occupancy is. So though one, though these entities are being talked about as one, they're really going to have to be two separate leasable areas. And if they meet that definition, then they meet that definition. So again, it's a, it's a nuance, but it is what the ordinance allows.
If you recall, we did a similar thing just up the street at sixty-two Muzzy Road at the Asian Fusion Restaurant. That was a mixture of office space and restaurant space. This is similar, where you have a separate entrance for the brewery, it's totally separate from the restaurant, even though one can see into the other, they're separate and distinct entities.
Okay. Again, initially, that didn't, wasn't clear to me. Now I have a clearer understanding of that. In light of that, as we heard from the tenant, has there been discussions with the sewer and water department, that there's adequate flow that's going to?
There is no question about the flow. The whole servicing is something that just came to light in the staff memo that I got late last week. I'm sure that's something we can work through, based on what we have out there. I'm very confident that we can get the sewer situation resolved.
Okay, and I'll address one of the other, the setback. Is it a fifteen as it's now, and not twenty-five?
Correct. Because there's twenty-five when it changes zones, so the T V C three zone ends on our property to the south, but the property to the north is also T V C three zoned. So in that case, it's fifteen-foot setback, structure setback. It's fifteen feet to the south, but it's a twenty-five-foot landscape buffer, because it's a change in zone used from T V C three to residential.
And of course, you're going to come back with all of the stormwater management. I've, I've read through some of the stuff, but I can't.
It's, it's mostly been addressed to this point, but.
Okay. I think that there are some other minor details that I have concerns about, but nothing that needs to be mentioned at this moment. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Nick?
Yeah, thank you. Okay. So there is a fifteen-foot setback on, is it Mr. Vu?
Correct.
That's a fifteen-foot setback side. The other side of the property, though, is a twenty-five-foot setback.
It, it's still fifteen-foot setback, but there's a twenty-five-foot buffer because of the change in zone.
Just on that other side of the property, though. So, what I can see here, though, you're still having a problem keeping within the fifteen-foot buffer with this design? Is that correct?
I didn't think so.
I see three parking spaces, four parking spaces.
Parking, I believe you're allowed to go to within ten feet.
Okay.
So the fifteen-foot is a building setback issue?
Okay, so not on the building there.
Correct. But there are, just, just for the board, as I, recognizing this is an issue you're working through, that, you know, the standards do sort of talk about, there are screening standards, again, sort of like we talked about with the last. So the board, depending on what you feel is necessary, does.
Yeah, there's a, there's a lot of mechanicals it looks like on that side of the building.
Yeah, so I, I could tell you, we're going to be adding a fence as long as bumping up the landscaping in that, on that side.
All right. And then, the visual that you have over there, it's got one cupola, one, and in my packet, I've got three on this. Have we, can we come to a decision on what that's going to look like?
One is, is what we're hoping for. I'd like to go a little bit larger and base it on, you know, again, trying to base it on the New England barn aesthetic, and, and if we feel the proportions are correct. And, you know, trying to be not so commercial, trying to be more in the New England aesthetic, and not come off as, as too stodgy, but we think the one is, is what we want to go.
Okay. And I think I'm going to, I'm going to follow Susan here, and I think I mentioned it last time, which is, I think my bigger problem is the visual impact of that roof as you go by. That's enormous. And I think the other hurdle I'm really having trouble getting over, and this is more of a personal vendetta of mine, I hate metal roofs. So to see that much metal roof as I'm driving by on Route One really kind of bothers me. And I don't know how it, it would, with our design standards in that area, whether or not, you know, we try to aim for that New England, and I see the barn style here, which is great. I just don't know if there's another solution to break it up. That is so much metal roof. I mean, it's so much metal roof. It's, you know, it's, sort of cupolas there, you know. Somebody put it in the middle there, on the roof side to break, it's just a lot of metal roof. It just drives me personally. I mean, anyways, so that would be my other thought on, on that. You know, is, is that something, you know, personal, like I said, it's a personal issue I have with metal roofs. It's just a lot to look at from Route One. And I can tell you, we're very hard to squeeze everything you possibly could into this plan. I mean, there's just no unused space, so, way to maximize a property. You've got where, I think, I'm understanding, but as Ron, there's, there's little things, but all in all, it looks like you're making the best of the situation. I just, I'm going to echo what the residents have said, which is, you, I think, making sure you take every precaution necessary to make sure that your, your butters are satisfied at the end of the day, because this is a proposal, and, and maybe it's zoned this way, but it is residential right now. And, and I know you're zoned to be able to go in there, but I, I think just making sure that you respect the abutters in this is, is huge going forward, every step of the way. And hopefully you'll, maybe even reach out to them to see, you know, what it is you can do to help allay some of their fears, I think would, would be helpful, just from a, this perspective. That's, that's all I really have at this point.
Thanks, Nick. Mike?
Thanks, Corey. On the design of the building, I, it appears to be fine with me as it exists, but you did have three cupolas before, did you not?
Yes. Yes, that, that, well.
Now, if you, if you add a cupola, you said the purpose of adding the cupola was to kind of break up the mass?
Right.
Is it then safe to say adding three breaks it up even more?
Well, it's definitely have.
I mean.
Just in case, this is a comparison.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Yeah, okay. I don't know.
It's almost a little too much.
Yeah.
Maybe two's the answer, right, yeah.
But, you know, it's, a, a lot of the, a lot of the bars will have the single water and throat side, and so it's not that one's appropriate, so.
Okay. I think it's more important that the cupola be sized correctly, right?
Yes.
Yeah. We've, that, we've talked a bit about this being the T V C zone, and you do fit the criteria for use in that zone, but I think for all intents and purposes, you're the first one in, really. So, in the middle of a neighborhood, the intent of having that buffering, increasing buffering between zones is obvious. So although you meet the criteria, twenty-five feet between zones, fifteen feet with your neighbor who's in the same zone, but the use is much different. And like Nick said, you've maximized this property, it appears, but I'm not an engineer. So I, I would ask that, you know, maybe you can, maybe you can increase a little bit more buffering between the, the, the individual to your door.
Yes.
We talk about buffering, of course, and you're gonna be very liberal and very generous in buffering, I imagine. The plan indicates you are.
Yeah, and I think we're gonna go back and revisit that and also look at a fence, stockade-type fence along that property line.
And fencing is fine, too, except that two, three, four years later, when snow gets pushed up against it or other mishaps, the fence ends up being, it takes on the opposite effect. It just ends up being an eyesore. So I think the board often has elected to use things like split rail or whatever, but that doesn't do a lot with shield.
Screening, right.
So I'd be interested to see what, what kind of ideas come out of, on your next trip back on those kinds of discussions. Again, if you can increase a little bit more of the buffering, I don't think anyone would argue against that. The snow, I see on the neighbor to the, to the south side, it shows proposed tree line. Is proposed meaning to say it, does it exist?
So what's gonna happen is, there's a ditch there now that's in poor shape. We need to regrade that ditch. When we regrade that ditch, some of the vegetation can be taken down. So what we're gonna do is plant back to build back that tree line when we put the landscaping back.
Is the current tree line mature, or?
It's in there. It's kind of brushy. It's been, you can tell it's been used as a ditch for road runoff that's directed off of Gorham Road down through there into the, into the stream.
And the elevation of the parking lot to this, this abutter, is it...
When you get down to that point, it's just about that grade. It's not a little bit below grade currently.
Because I was thinking about runoff issues, because you have a note here where it might be used as snow storage also.
So, right, so we're gonna drain that front parking lot through a treatment swale that's located between the parking lot and Gorham Road. And that runoff will run in that ditch basically down and utilize that DOT swale and wrap around back towards the stream.
Okay, and the snow storage isn't a concern as it melts and would it move off into?
A lot of it would go through that treatment swale anyway, any snow that's there.
So the storage will be on the paved area?
No, it's just off, but that whole area between, between...
Will tams sure at all?
Yeah. Yeah, there's stone check tams in there, too. As it melts, it's gonna go through that.
Okay. Lighting, I see your photometrics, and it suggests that along the, along the periphery, there is zero.
Correct.
Candle, power?
That's our plan.
Okay. There's no plans for any outdoor speakers?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Table ready, that kind of stuff?
No.
I think that's important, being in a neighborhood like that. Natural gas is being brought to this location?
Yeah, for brewing beer. My understanding from the applicants, they use a substantial amount of energy per year. And their discussions with the gas company, I believe, has been successful in that they're willing to run it down there based on the amount of gas they'll be using per year.
I wonder if that might mitigate some of the abutters, because I know I wish I could have natural gas run across the front of my frontage. But how far will it go, just to this property and?
Correct.
And it'll come from a corners area?
Muzzy Road, I believe.
The connection for the sewer, did we already talk about that?
That's, that's a new wrinkle, but we've been talking with them. We've already talked to them about how we're gonna deal with brewery waste. It's a matter of dotting the i's and crossing the t's at this point and working out the details.
But your connection to the sewer?
There's a stub already onto the site.
It's already there. It's beyond the, I mean, one of the abutters talked about...
Right, and we've got, that's something that just, I didn't know about until late last week, so we're in the process of working through that.
The individual indicated they had an easement. Would that easement be on what you otherwise are showing as, not, maybe not showing it on this?
Yeah, I think it's something that slipped through when we did the boundary survey. We did not pick that up.
All right. I agree with some of the comments that have been made, all the comments really that have been made already. In particular, parking. Parking's gonna be tight.
Yeah.
You do meet the requirements. Even though we like to think that we're well versed in a lot of these guidelines. I mean, I even raise my eyebrows when I see that the requirement for one, for four seats is one space. And I think back, how many folks are, how many times do four people arrive in the same car? You know, not often. So I do wish you could add more parking, but it doesn't appear that you'll be able to. But any other ideas you have along that subject is certainly gonna be welcome. Including the, the way you can fit into this existing residential area, even though it is TVC. I think you made a motion, it appeared to me like this was really the first example of our rezoning. Can I be corrected on that? Was there something else that occurred?
At 62 Muzzy Road, which is also TVC3?
Yeah.
But, I mean, it's a quarter of a mile away, but...
It is.
This is more, we understand, we're in the middle of where residences were previously. Where the other one had some business to one side.
Yeah, it was pretty much already established, though. Yeah, okay, good. All right, well, I appreciate you coming and showing what you have, and I look forward to your next visit. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Ron?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, but one other thing. Sidewalk, qualify for me what the intent is as far as sidewalk is concerned.
So, and this is, we haven't formally agreed, but I think Jay's idea in the memo is a good one, is that we don't actually construct a sidewalk at this point, because we don't know where Gorham Road is going to be. But we make a contribution for constructing sidewalks along our frontage, so that when the time comes, that sidewalk is constructed in the right location.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I want to first thank those who spoke from the public. It's always good to get that input. We absolutely understand and appreciate the concerns about this type of use going into this type of location. As has been pointed out, this use is allowed under the current zoning, the TVC3. That said, as Mr. Wood and others have pointed out, the fact on the ground is that this would be sort of in a residential neighborhood. So we'll definitely, I'll add my voice to those saying that, we'll really encourage you to continue to take that to heart. Explore whether you can increase the setback to the north from 15 to 25. And really look hard at different zoning and buffering and screening measures, including fencing and landscaping. As has been pointed out, parking is going to be a huge driver here, so to speak. And if the initial reaction on sort of social media and in response to the local news reports after your first appearance here are any indication, there is a lot of pent-up demand. And people are already, you know, queuing up almost to get in there and wondering when it's gonna open. So I think we all agree that would be a good problem to have if this does go forward. And we wish it nothing but success. But that does mean that we are gonna be looking closely at the traffic impact study when that comes to us. We'll wanna see what additional thoughts you might have on parking and circulation. Certainly, the applicant's prerogative, given the zoning, to maximize the build-out to the letter of the law. But we, we do need to be mindful of the impacts and the context here. And speaking of the context, I don't know that it's, I don't think it's been brought up tonight, but there have been references to the fact that there is an ongoing effort underway to, to design an improved Gorham Road corridor there. And so I just encourage you to continue to factor that into your thinking. One of the comments by our traffic peer reviewer was that the proposed left turn lane design be superimposed on the Gorham Road design to ensure that they will not conflict. And that the left turn lane is something else that we haven't really talked about specifically tonight.
Yeah, and I think I purposely did that, because we haven't had the scoping meeting yet.
Sure, sure.
So I think we need to dig into that a little bit further till we know.
Yeah, and I don't want to get too far out ahead of things, but just to kind of set the stage for next time, that kind of falls under the heading of traffic and parking, which is, again, a big driver here. Staff had noted as well that we'll wanna make sure that we have a good handle on the location placement of mechanicals. That seems to be a recurring theme lately on projects sort of...
They're not going on the roof.
Right.
Everything will be on the backside.
Whether on the roof and if they're, if they're on the ground, how they're screened, how they're protected, all that, all that. So one thing that was noted in some of the comments that has not been discussed, there are some, there are few questions or comments about landscaping and screening in general, but I don't think we've specifically talked about the landscaping along Gorham Road edge of the property. And specifically, the concern that it's a fairly steep grade there, and that we just wanna make sure that that's taken into consideration as you really flesh out the landscaping plan, that whatever goes there can really thrive there and make sense, given that topography. You noted that you're exploring the sewer connection issue. In terms of land, architecture, I actually like the design. I completely understand the concerns about scale and whether we're gonna be overwhelmed by that roof. But I think there's a tendency sometimes with these renderings to, for some, certain things to get exaggerated a little bit. If it's possible to, and I know you've tried to do your best to this point, but if it's possible to provide us with renderings that provide a little bit more context with regard to the road as well as the abutters and some of the surrounding trees and such, that would be helpful. But again, I don't have an issue with the architecture. It's, you know, it's not exactly like what's there, which to me is fine. And I see metal roofs all over New England, and I don't personally have an issue with that. So with that, I think we've pretty well touched on all the, all the big issues. Is there anything more you need from us, this stage?
Yep, you brought that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Item number nine, Martin's Point Healthcare requests site plan review for 153 U.S. Route 1, Assessor's Map U47, Lot 92. Jay?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chair. See, board members will likely recall this application. It's been before you on a couple of occasions at this point, and been through a few rounds of staff review comments. Most recently, this before you at your last meeting, in which board members talked about a number of issues, including the general layout of the site and the building. And based on the comments that we heard from the board and the modifications that the applicant has made, staff really only has a few remaining comments. One is just to, as the board works through this, recognize that the applicant is requesting to take advantage of one of the allowances in our parking standards that does allow for multiple uses that are on one site to share parking. So they are seeking some allowance or consideration of that matter, which seemed like at the last meeting, staff, board was prepared to support. But that is one thing we still need to just ensure we address. Stormwater, we've been going through an ongoing stormwater review. Our town engineers here, if there are any specific questions, Water and Kern has also provided a round of review comments. At this point, we're relatively satisfied that they've made some really good progress and that this item is, the remaining comments can pretty readily be addressed as conditions of approval if the board so saw fit. So with that, I guess I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chair. Staff has, again, provided a draft motion with considerations of conditions should the board be so inclined.
Thanks, Jay. I'll turn over the applicant.
Okay. I'm gonna turn, I haven't had luck with this in the last few meetings, so I'll just turn this around just to orient everyone to where we are on the site. So Route 1 to the bottom of the page, Loises would be directly across. It is a signalized entrance. The new facility here, Prime Auto Group, in this location, their new parking lot. It does have a one-way drop-off coming into the site, internal circulation within the parking lot, good pedestrian access in the island and at the front of the building. Landscaping along Route 1, it does come into the right-of-way as we discussed at a previous meeting. The project sign has been shifted back and shortened to meet ordinance requirements. You do have a new sign in your packet. Lighting has been addressed, as noted. There are houseside shields. There is no lighting trespass. And the landscaping around, even though it's not tremendous, it is good. So I would like to answer any questions that we have. And we did receive staff's comments. We did email our responses earlier today. If you don't have those, we are prepared to respond to them.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
First, if there's any one in the audience who'd like to make any comments, now's the time. All right, seeing none, we'll go to the board. Mike?
I don't have much to add from our last meeting. Looking forward to seeing, seeing it built.
Me, too.
And it's nice to see that that lot was re-realized so quickly. I'm looking at your, since you're here, I'll ask you, otherwise I'd spend five minutes looking for it. But where, where is the sign being placed on the lot?
The sign is just a little bit past, so there is a project sign here. We're actually just a little bit more interior to the site.
Okay, good, because I know we had some discussions back and forth, I think, where, and I'm pleased to see that it's favoring, as we look at the plan on the left side, because I know Prime is building a...
Right, if you look on, on Sheet 4 of 11, you will see that, where that location is.
I do. Thank you. Yeah, very good.
Yeah.
I don't have anything to add, and I'm comfortable, Mr. Chairman, with the motion as drafted.
Thanks, Mike. Nick?
I like what I see, and I'm comfortable with the motion as drafted.
All right, thank you. Ron?
Yeah, likewise. My only comment was the snow situation. Has that been cleared up?
It has, and I apologize, it wasn't in the packet. We did bring copies of plans showing the snow storage. But generally, where the snow storage is, is in the southern area, or I'm sorry, northern area, in this area. And then we did have localized in the islands. It should be adequate for what we need.
And since I'm not an engineer, I'm gonna ask Angela, are you okay with what you've been exposed to as far as this project is concerned?
Or in general?
Yeah.
We're talking about snow storage still. Okay. I think we, we had a lot of concerns and comments about stormwater, and I think they've addressed the big concerns. I think there's just a handful of minor tweaks that staff needs to work through with them. But it's, I think it's adequate at this point for the stormwater concerns we had originally. And then, snow storage was a concern with originally going in some areas where the BMPs were being placed. But as it is now, it's not a concern, where they've moved things around, so I'm saddened.
Okay, so you think everything is workable?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. That's all I have.
Thank you. Susan?
I think we should sit here all the time.
Yes.
It's wonderful to have her here and to be able to say, you know, what do you think? It's just a nice addition to what happens, so.
I agree with you, Susan.
Just that off. I also have no, you know, I mean, there are things I would tweak a little differently, but the landscaping is tremendous.
Oh, thank you.
It's just, actually, I did, I went and I parked my car. Who else does this, right? Had on my muck boots, and I walked around on the side between you and Prime. And if you do what you say you're going to do, it's gonna turn what is a miserable situation into something that's really outstanding.
Oh, good.
So thank you for making that effort.
Sure.
If you, if you maintain it, which I know you will.
Yes, they will.
It's gonna be a wonderful addition to Route 1.
I think so, as well.
So thank you for all your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Roger?
Thanks. I agree with everybody's comments so far. I think the building looks terrific. I think you've done a great job with the site. I think the building is very complimentary to the Prime Motorship or this building right next door to it. So I think it's gonna be a great addition to that section of Route 1.
Thank you. Likewise, I'm very happy with, with the outcome here. I don't really have any, any issues at this point. I also think it's great that this is, the site's being turned around so quickly. And thank you for, for all your work and responsiveness on it. And with that, I will read the motion. I move to approve the application of Martin's Point Healthcare, represented by Sabeo Technics, under Chapter 405 zoning ordinance and Chapter 405B site plan review ordinance with the following findings, waivers, and conditions. Findings: Martin's Point Healthcare proposes to redevelop property located at 153 U.S. Route 1. The site is approximately 1.91 acres and is located within the Town and Village Center zoning district. The redevelopment includes a 16,864-square-foot building, consisting of approximately 14,864 square feet of medical office space and 2,000 square feet of community meeting space. The site improvements also include parking... The site improvements also include parking, walkways, fire access drives, landscaping, stormwater infrastructure, facilities for alternative transportation, and related amenities. The planning board has reviewed the application and supporting documentation and finds that the proposed design of the site plan adequately addresses the site plan review ordinance, zoning ordinance, and design standards requirement, design standard requirements for site utilization and layout, access, internal vehicular movement, pedestrian ways, landscaping, stormwater management, architecture, signage, utilities, and storage. Further, the board has considered the variable time of probable maximum use between the two onsite activities, medical office and community space, and finds that 69 spaces will substantially meet the intent of the town's parking requirements. There are two waivers. Number one, based on the existing site conditions and the evidence provided by the applicant, the board waives the requirement to maintain a 15-foot streetscape buffer strip along the Route 1 frontage. And two, based on the evidence provided by the applicant, the board finds that a 24-foot aisle width is sufficient to provide safe internal circulation through the parking field. Conditions of approval. Number one, prior to the issuance of the building permit, the applicant shall, A, execute and record the maintenance agreement required by the post-construction stormwater infrastructure management ordinance; B, provide revised plans to address comments in planning staff's memo related to conflicts within the access easement area and plan notes; C, provide revised plans to address issues raised in Witterd and Kern's memo dated January 22, 2016? Condition number two, a pre-construction meeting is required before the start of construction. The meeting shall include appropriate town staff, the developer and his contractor, and utility company representatives, if applicable. The pre-construction meeting may be scheduled in coordination with the senior planner. Number three, the final location and design of the bus shelter pad is to be refined as necessary with the staff of the planning department. And number four, the applicant is to work with the planning department and the property owner on easement language and documentation that may be necessary. That is the motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
If I might, Mr. Chair, could we understand a little bit the conflicts in the easement condition of approval?
Which, number four?
It was the, I think it was Item B, conflicts within the easement.
Oh, 1D.
Yep. If I may.
Yes, Jay, please.
Yep, that's the tree filter box in the middle of the easement that we had talked about moving to one side or the other.
Yeah, we did, in the comments that we gave you, we did look at it, and there's two scenarios that we could pursue. One would be to shorten the easement in order to allow for a minor shift of the tree box, because as you know, that, all that drainage is going into that filter right there. So that, we could shorten it, the easement, just to give, just enough to create an aisle width. We could identify that that tree filter gets moved as part of, because the way the grading is going, that whole area would drain if the easement were connected, and drainage would then run down further, so the relocation of the tree filter would make sense. If we pull it out to Route 1, the grading's going to impact the bus shelter and the landscaping that we're proposing. So if I might suggest, you know, we can certainly continue to work with staff, but if we are going to have a condition, I just want to make sure that it's not a burden to change the entire site plan and grading and concept.
And I think, at least in my interpretation of this and based on past experience, that what you've described would fall within working to address the comments. It doesn't hold you to any particular measure. Mike, did you have anything?
Yeah, I forgot to ask, where are the mechanicals going, like HVAC?
They're inside the building.
They're all inside?
They're all inside.
Okay, no, I'm staring at that flat roof, and I was just, I had to ask the question to make sure they didn't show up on that. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments?
I just might offer on that, just on that discussion point, that in talking with Angela, you know, we felt that the tree box filter relocation, or just talking about that, wouldn't really ostensibly change the site, so we were comfortable at this point moving forward. So I think, you know, you echoed where staff's position on it is, and it can be.
I think that's why there was a comment in there about it being so significantly wide. You have 45 foot, and so maybe a compromise about shifting it, plus maybe a slight reduction in the width.
Yeah, I think it speaks to, because we didn't really get a chance to talk about the stormwater. I mean, we really are treating 50% of the site, even though, from an ordinance and stormwater standpoint, there isn't maybe as aggressive treatment required. So we just want to make sure that if we're going to relocate it, that it doesn't, it doesn't burden the project further.
We'll leave that to you and our capable staff.
Okay.
Anything else? All right, all in favor? Thank you, and luck.
Thank you.
We look forward to seeing it. Is there a town planner's report?
Yep, two things to mention to the board. Just let board members know, and I believe you saw an email to this effect, but the complete streets policy was accepted by the council, so that is now a standing policy of the town. And the other item, again, I think you've received a few emails from Karen on this, is that the main municipal association is putting on a training for a planning board and Board of Appeals members. I know a few planning board members have already indicated they're able to go and willing to sign up, and anyone else is interested, Karen's going to be putting in our registration tomorrow, so please touch base with her. It's good if you are new, and good if it's been a while since you've been there, so comes recommended.
Thank you. Administrative amendment report.
Two items to report. Let's see, now the Hillcrest Retirement Community, they received administrative approval for a small garage expansion. And the other one is Cornerstone Baptist Church. Board members might recall this before you, just a meeting or two ago, for a small addition. They, when they were doing their final planning, they realized that they added a little bit more to the addition. It would make coordination of the site a lot easier and fit in with the overall master plan for the site. And again, that's an item that had been reviewed by staff and the board chair and received an administrative approval.
Thank you. Any planning board correspondence?
You did, will have received memos from the Conservation Commission on the 299 Gorham Road project. That's the project that's going through the master plan review process that Ken Grandin is working on across from the None Such River Golf Course, so.
I do have a question as it relates to that. I was just looking it over. So is this, this is obviously a recommendation. Do we know, I mean, what's the process here? So we asked the Conservation Commission to weigh in. They've handed their opinion to the applicant, and to us, obviously. When they come back to us, are we expecting them to incorporate this, or are they going to be, are these, is this more or less for us to use when we discuss the project with them?
It's an advisory opinion to the board?
Okay.
The applicant may look at some of these comments and say, oh, those are easy fixes. We'll do them. They may say, we don't like these, and who knows how they'll address them.
That's what, that was what my concern was, because I see that they've asked them to maybe do some studies and things, and I didn't know if that was already required of them.
Some of those studies will be required.
We can talk about those when they come back. Thank you.
Yep, thanks. Any planning board comments?
Yep.
Me, too.
Go ahead, Sue, because I've got a report.
You've got a report.
Yeah.
I'll be quick, so we, I just want to refer back to the Conservation Commission's report. I find this very exciting, and I want to commend staff for having assisted them in getting their, becoming familiar, getting their feet wet, however you want to talk about it, in terms of giving them a real, specific thing to do and to role to play. And I would like to encourage us as a board to ask for their input as much as is possible. I would like to have them take a look at the brewery, for example. Never thought of it. Anyway, so, excellent job. And then, I'm just, I'm just bringing this up, I think On the Vine Marketplace is an example of an administrative approval that perhaps should not have been an administrative approval. And I'm not bringing that up as a condemnation, I'm just saying, I think it's the kind of thing that we need to be really careful about, because something like that could easily lead to just what it did tonight, whereas if they had come to us at the very beginning, they would have had a heads up, and it wouldn't have been a shock to them, especially since they really didn't have a lot of previous experience doing this sort of thing.
Or with this jurisdiction, either.
That's what I'm talking about.
Right, right.
The jurisdiction thing was just really very complex, and.
Right.
I think it turned out just fine, considering all the things that could have happened, but perhaps we ought to take another look at that sort of thing in the future. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Roger?
All right, just a comment, and it pertains to, it'll have some effect on Ron. I wanted to mention about the bus station. It's a bus stop that is planned for Martin's Point, and we also, if I recall, we, there was one for investor. They were talking about putting one down there. And it seems to me that, for instance, this one here at Martin's Point, you could conceivably have a bus stop on the southbound lane. Now, I assume people who are traveling southbound are also going to want to go northbound at some point, so you'd need a bus station on the other side of the road, where you're not going to have the bus coming, crossing over somehow. So I would refer this to your Transportation Committee to. Gotcha. To consider a, some sort of a master plan if we're going to be encouraging bus, public transportation along Route 1. That has been brought up before, by the way, a master plan, and it sort of fell not out of the realm of things, but in backburner, and I'll bring it up again in our next meeting, which is February 23rd, so thank you for that.
Okay.
Thank you.
I expect one of those stations to be named after me.
Just dream on.
Ron? That's a great lead-in to my Transportation Committee report, because there's a lot that's going on, and Jay sort of took a little bit of my thunder away here, in that we worked hard on this streets, complete streets policy, which we were thrilled that was unanimously passed by the council, and in short terms, it just makes life easier for everybody. Automobiles, pedestrians, bicyclists, and, I mean, it's not an easy project, and the recommendations and what was passed was, after many years, many months, I should say, of working together, so that has been done. As an aside, Sue, I second, Angela sits on the Transportation Committee with me, and she even makes things clear for me, which is very, very difficult to do, and she is just a welcome employee to this town, and I want that publicly stated, and in the short time she's been here, I think she's accomplished so much, and look forward to her accomplishing a lot more as time passes. Having said that, we have three applications into PACS, okay? One for, that's available in 2017 for Gorham Road, and we've asked for the maximum there, and we have to put up 25%, and I think the maximum is $200,000, and if it goes through, it hasn't gone through yet, hasn't Angela?
No, that's for an MPI project.
Yes, we have to put up our own funds, which is like $70,000, $75,000, but that has been in. And then, there are two other going in, because it's always three years out, and one is for Pine Point, and it's a real step-by-step process, so it's a difficult process, and that's why it has to be done so much in advance. And there's another one for, what's the other one, East Grand, I think?
Right, one is the intersection.
East Grand Ave., and one is Pine Point, East Grand Intersection. And we're working on that, and there are applications going in to PACS for that, and that's going to be an interesting evolution also, because of the difficulties of what's going on down there. But that's what we're working on right now as a, as a committee. Those are two, two or three items. We're still working with the railroad. I did bring that up the last time I gave you, went out on that, but we're still working on, with the railroad about their horn as it goes through my area of the woods, and that's about what's going on in our committee. A lot going on.
Thanks, Ron. Just a couple of quick comments from me. Number one, echo what Susan said about the Conservation Commission. Appreciate the time and effort that they've put into the recommendations, not only looking at the plans, but taking the time to meet with the applicant and their representative, and I think that's a valuable service to us. And just want to thank everyone for their support, Mr. Chair, and look forward to another good year. And with that, I'll move to a adjournment.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.
Yes. And I do have you, Roger.